We call the meeting to order and start the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Empire, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just for all.
Would you show that we have any additions or additions to the agenda?
Yeah.
We'll be put down together.
I move that with the adoption of my agenda. Second.
Oh, favor.
Uh.
Jan up there?
Yeah.
I did your okay.
I'm here.
We need to see if you approve the minutes for January 18th, 2022.
I move that we approve the January 18th, 2022 minutes. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Okay, so before we open it up to public comments, I would like to let you all know all our teachers are valued and precious teachers. We, as a board, speak as one voice in letting you know we value you and your hard work. We acknowledge how important you are to our children and our community. Um, I'm going to, I've written down a couple of things and I'm going to read from it because I don't want to miss out or say anything that's not appropriate. It's a tricky, um, bridge that we walk. We, we have to be careful about what we say and how we say it as a board. So, I want you to note, we want to pay you a fair share, a fair competitive wage. We also have to be sure that the district financially sustained these wage increases. While we share the urgency to get the, this contract settlement, we've been working on it for months. We recognize there are many complexities. It's not an easy thing to, to agreement on. So, the district and the Cleveland Rossell Education Association are in mediation and continue to bargain in good faith to ensure we reach a fair contract. We trust, we have to trust our teams to work together on behalf of our community. While we're working through this process, we have several questions about negotiations. There is a link on the website to check to see what the process and the progress has been. I just, if you could go there and, and see the information that we've put on there. We're trying to keep information, but we, it's, it's a, it's a tricky road because you can't divulge. It's pretty open and upward about the, uh, budget information and that kind of stuff, but we can't, for instance, we've looked at other salaries. We can't divulge that stuff. We can see how your salaries compare and we're trying to be, uh, open and transparent. And trust me, we could, I mean, what would we be without you all? So, thank you for your hard work every day with our kids, especially these tough times. We appreciate you.
Public comment, Kathy?
Repression. We are in the thick of it. Red flag number one, the school board and the superintendent have ignored all of us for far too long. And we will continue and will continue to do so unless people start to stand up and speak out about what's happening within our school. Our school board is more concerned with looking unified on current issues than really trying to find common ground and work with each other for the betterment of our teachers and children. A lack of leadership within our school should have our school boards spinning and instead we spend each minute, meeting telling each other how great you all are doing. At some point, you have to look in the mirror and ask who you are making decisions for. You do not work for a superintendent. You are supposed to represent us. We aren't happy and it doesn't faze you all one bit. You look at our superintendent for approval instead of the parents and the students of the school. That is the definition of a poorly run organization and congratulations because you all have now become the face of failure for our school. The board isn't supposed to represent one person. You are multiple people from multiple backgrounds and it's time to start talking and working through the difficult conversations. Our superintendent or a piece of paper with a stamp of approval doesn't determine the success of our school. The people within it does. Red flag number two, rarely will anyone respond to an email. You put nothing in writing. Michelle will often offer a sit-down meeting that works for her, although being completely insensitive to the fact that people might not have the time or the desire to be in person. Protocols, policies, school rules should all be, not be hard to share in an email. After all, what better way to hold people accountable? Red flag number three, our athletic director is young, full of passion and a newer hire. Why is she having to communicate to coaches, parents, students when it comes to questions or concerns about the Department of Health, COVID rules, policies, protocols, and any mental health crisis? This is not her job. She should never have to answer questions for the principal, our district health nurse, or Mark Larson. What are we even following? County guidelines, State Department of Health, or making up our own? We should be able to have a conversation with the frontline administrators about the ever-changing policies or the ones that you pull out of thin air. What are we paying our nurse for if our AD is doing her job? I've had a really long day, shouldn't be the response of our district nurse when asked by a coach to clarify some new rules to, for some upset parents to understand. You also can have, you also cannot have the athletic rules changed numerous times in a 24-hour period and end up throwing a student and their family under the bus to cover up the fact that you all dropped the ball. How have, how you have continued to ignore the mental health crisis of our athletes two plus years into this is disgusting. Red flag number four, our teachers. It isn't even a discussion anymore. We have all heard very loud and clear your feelings about our teachers. I guess you will have to be reminded again that you are to represent us, the parents, the taxpayers, the students. It isn't about what you personally think of the teachers. Our teachers deserve fair pay. Our kids deserve their teachers. Having our teachers is more important than winning an award for what you kept in the bank. End of story. At what point will we realize that we are the ones that need to suffer and talk about the hard stuff so that the kids don't have to? This thought honestly seems so foreign to the school board and superintendent. It's heartbreaking, but even more so maddening. It's time to take accountability. Ninety percent of you sitting up here know absolutely nothing about what goes on day to day at these schools. Guess who does know? The parents, the teachers, and the students. Then look around and ask yourself, who is furious? The parents, the teachers, and the students. And I assure you, we are the bigger bear.
As I stand here tonight, the tension's powerful. There's a room full of teachers, parents, and community members demanding answers and even more valid explanations for actions or the lack of actions happening day in and day out at our schools. If you recall, the last meeting I attended in December, I left a sheet with a few questions on it for each of the board members. This sheet had all of my contact information. Do you know how many responses I got? Zero. That is completely unacceptable. This is why hope is turning into anger and frustration. As elected school board members, it is your obligation to respond. You do not get to hold your position and not provide reason for why you're making the decisions you're making. I explained it once, but feel that it needs to be heard again. As a school board member, you are part of a checks and balances system. You are the voice of the students. You are here to make sure that all operations support the well-being of the students. You are not here to please the superintendent and bow to her demands. You are supposed to manage and direct the superintendent in a direction that again is best for the students. You are completely failing as a school board. I am not alone in asking for each of you to stand up and fight for what is best for these students at the Cleveland Rossell School District, or please resign your position. There are so many issues causing stress, anxiety, and completely complicating our students' lives right now that should not be and are at the hands of a mismanaged district. Since the school year began, the operations and protocol for different policies have been ever-changing. This is damaging students in ways most of you aren't aware of. It's putting a fear in their mind that is leading to some pretty scary and damaging actions. At the forefront of these decisions are a district nurse, superintendent, county health advisor, and building principals who seem to only communicate via email when convenient or over the phone with no record of the discussion. Where are they tonight? Why aren't they here speaking on the importance of these policies? Our district is sitting on one of the largest surpluses of money we've ever had. Ballots are out for voters to replace a maintenance money. However, for some reason, we aren't willing to pay competitive wages to keep our experienced staff. Snow removal on school premises is a complete failure. The majority of student bathrooms are broken. Events have been canceled due to the lack of bus drivers. There is over a decade of ongoing gym space shortage. We can't get substitute teachers and still no one is discussing the plan for the money. All of these issues can be solved with money. This is just one more way you, as a school board, are failing our students. We are reaching a breaking point. Something has to give. I know I speak for many parents when I say we are fed up. We are here for answers. If you do not want to provide these answers or feel that it is not your duty to do so, then you are who we are coming after. We want and need people in these positions that are parents, people that see the day in and day out of us, people that want to fight for these kids.
Sandy.
My name is Sandy Tate. I've been out here for 20 years. I'm currently president of the Cleveland Rossell Education Association, Sariah, and sometimes speaking on behalf of the talented, amazing, dedicated speakers back in the day. And here I'm concerned that we've yet to reach a bargaining agreement between Sariah and the district. Our members have been working without a contract for nearly five months. I ask you, how many of you would be willing to work without a contract? So why do we do it? Because we care about our students. We want what's best for them. And what is the main sticking point in the negotiations? Receiving fair and equitable pay. Sariah's certified staff is by far the most paid in our area. We're not asking to be paid more than everyone, even though our housing prices are way higher as well as the possible living. We just want to compare the salary. How else will this district maintain the great teachers they have? And if or when teachers do move on, how can you possibly expect to attract new teachers? Do you honestly think quality teachers will come to Cleveland and they can make over $10,000 more just out of growth? We are so far behind the other districts in our area because this district is not making the kind of investment it would take to be competitive with the other districts. Not highest paid, but equitable and competitive. Don't our students, parents, and community members deserve to know that every effort is being made to attract and keep teachers here? Norale among our staffers lower than I've ever seen before. We've been operating in crisis mode for nearly two years with the top priority of putting students' needs ahead of morale. Now, we are in crisis. Besides the stress of teaching in general, add to that with the pandemic. We are getting the message loud and clear that we are not valued by our district. Some of us are alumni and even second-generation warriors. Many of us have put our own kids through school here. Newer teachers might want to settle down and raise a family in this amazing place that we call home. You know, we are being told by your actions that you don't care. You don't care about the years of dedication and passion that we've put into teaching here, our historical ties to this area, or the relationships that we've built with students and families. We are being told that if we don't like working for less, then we should move on. Again, is that what's best for our students? Seven months of negotiations is enough. Five months without a contract is way too long. We have continued to teach and put the needs of our students ahead of our own, but the district doesn't seem to be willing to support us in any way. Board members, I call on you for action. I implore you to do what's right for our students. You simply can't take care of students if you don't take care of teachers.
I am speaking in response to a couple of comments I've heard at previous school board meetings about LGBTQT issues at the schools. When it seems the school district is struggling to deliver quality, basic education to our children. I am not advocating for discrimination against anyone, but in the wake of a traumatizing and difficult pandemic for everyone, I want to encourage all school board members, administrators, teachers, and staff to focus on basic education where our children have fallen behind and to devote their time and resources to that. Due to the wide range of beliefs and being such a polarizing issue, the subject of gender and sexuality should be kept to at-home discussions for each individual family to teach based on their values. While the school focuses on reading, writing, math, the hard sciences, so that our kids can catch up and our teachers can catch their breath and focus on what they love.
I just want the opportunity to finish last week's discussion because I didn't realize three minutes was out of that time. Um, many of my colleagues have shared tonight about the hard work that we've done. And I've heard school board members say for two years how important teachers are. You're the heart of our school. We couldn't do it without you. Your stance for the last five months says absolutely the opposite. You are pushing us out. I would never allow my child to work anywhere for five to seven months where they didn't know where their feet were at. That is unsettling. Last year, I heard how concerned you were for our teachers' mental health. Where is that concern now? Do not tell us anymore that we're important to you. Stop it. I, I've never been so accept as a member of this community, even after levy failures, bankruptcy that was not the teacher's fault, declining enrollments. We have been the man in the arena that you talk about. We're the ones with the mud and the muck and the mire on our bodies and our faces. I'm not saying that we deserve a red carpet. I'm not saying we deserve a gold tower. But we do deserve to be treated the same as our colleagues in Miss Keween with a fair, equitable, competitive wage. And if you want to say to us, if you don't like it, leave, then we'll go. But then who's going to hug the kids? Who's going to be the one to applaud them when they hear that "I am from" poem that talks about P.O. Point, Cooper Lake, the totem pole in front of the high school? Who is going to have that heart for them? Who has shared that journey for 13 years? Your new drive-through teachers? The ones who just want to come get a paycheck from our community and not give anything back? Is that what we've become? Is that where we're headed? I will fight until my dying day for the kids in this community. But I will not fight any longer to be treated substandard. For the last three years in this community, part of our, uh, trainings, we hear about the man in the arena, but we also focus on Brene Brown's work, and I'm going to finish it with this tonight. Integrity is, is choosing courage over comfort. Choosing what is right over what is fun, fast, or easy. And choosing to practice our values rather than professing them. Stop the talk. Walk the walk now. Do not let us go to June without a contract. That is unacceptable.
She might be outside.
There, that's a flag. Oh, I know you.
My name's Jessica Staker and I don't have a fancy prepared speech, but I do want you guys to know that as a former employee of the school district, you guys are going to have teachers walk. Some of you have great teachers that should not be walking. They're going to do what I do and find a job that is less stressful for more pay and I do appreciate it. And these teachers do not feel appreciated. They're not shown appreciation. They deserve a contract that is comparable to those districts around us and they're not getting. I could go to any other district in our county in a week or month. That's unacceptable and ridiculous and embarrassing. And you guys should be embarrassed for what you guys are offering these teachers. They deserve way better than what you guys are showing. The community is showing up for support for them. Our board, it's time for you guys to show and support them. That's all.
Michael Parker, which is the outside there too? Just holding up parking lots. Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Mike, you're up. Is that what Michael?
Yeah.
Maybe it's just.
So we don't have any action items? Information, please.
So, we've had a couple of questions come through through community divisions about the levy. So one, she's moved over site tonight. So, I went back and looked at some of the capital project levies in explanation and wanted to show that we kind of look at production like. There was a couple of questions from the last board meeting about what is it needed more people move in and why I was so thankful for having capital. So, I really want to try to capture some of those questions and add answers to those. So, in 2017, 18, 19, there was capital project levy. We had less posses in our county. And the time that that capital project levy was passed, it was 61 cents and then it's 219.60 cents. An estimated assessed price of $1,000. The last one that was run, it went out in 2019 and it's, this is the last year of that capital project levy and it runs through 2022. Um, it started out at 49 cents and we can see how it has gone down to 48, 47. And that is, as we know, when more people move in, it's, you're sharing the price of that, right? So it's like a birthday party. Really go on a birthday party gift worth $50. A fourth person says, I want to go in and give 95, 60, but I want to go in and eventually it goes down. And yet both those will run at 1.5 million. Same thing for this one. It's 1.5 each year, 2023, 2024, 2025. Uh, the reason we are going out as 35 is because we know it's going to come down because we have most of our account. So that's the representation of more homes here. And this is what went out to families so that you can see again, this is what we are estimating it on and this information went out. We're hoping. Another question that came up with the early learning center is, what about the fire? So we're getting a couple of questions. Isn't that a total down and we get the insurance money? So how does that help us with capital projects? So I want to explain a little bit about that. We just heard that. Uh, we've had lots of contractors in, insurance adjusters finding through that building. Prior to the fire, prior, um, we have worked to get that remodeled. And so when we look at the remodel, we look at rated funding. So we've got three different funding sources to help the early learning center. Uh, the first one is our budget set aside, which we can talk about a little bit that we've been talking about. Uh, our grant, O.S.P.I., we get some funding. It's not substantial. We have to apply to it every year. And the third, we think about that rated funding. Then the third one is the capital project levy. So regardless of if it's a remodel or a rebuild at this time, it sounds like we have to salvage the building according to the insurance adjuster. It's not a demo, complete rebuild, which means that the insurance money will go toward what was destroyed in the fire and then it doesn't, um, it keeps the same structure. So we still are going to be in the free rate funding sources, continue carrying through with our early learning center. So I just wanted to go through that. It's a little bit disappointing. Lots about that. I knew it was a bit in marketing, a lot, planning through rubbish. Okay, do you see that now? That question why? Okay, so we'll go back. That's simple, sure. Okay. Uh, and so when we think about our fund balance, there was a lot of questions about why we're going out for a capital levy if we have all this money for a fund balance. So I want to talk a little bit about where we're talking about that rated, rated funding. When we are looking at that early learning center, for example, with a rated funding, you can see at the top up there, YLO. That is the set aside for what we call restricted funding. So it's, it's set aside for certain things that we need for the budget. So for example, this early learning center, there's a $425,000 set aside in that budget to help with the rated funding, the grant, the set aside, and the capital project levy. That's how those three funding sources help us to continue our work with the early learning center. Anything else on that?
Yes. Before, was that $225,000 after you had the contractors come through budget out of the remodel or?
Uh, yeah, it's not based on fire. It was there's that.
Okay, so that was, that was the amount prior to the fire?
Yeah.
And that's still even with the insurance?
That's what we set sides. Overhead to the more money out of, this is the, yeah, so this is the pie set aside for the different funding sources.
Okay.
And within that is we on the set side.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, a good question. And we had, so that price came, um, across, we had a couple of walk-throughs with our architects. When Swift Water, when Swift Water laundry facility was occupied, uh, San Hidya, San Hidya, and then they left and they left. That came through again and had actually done the process and had the markets for the remodel and then the fire. So that is that budget that we set aside. Uh, and then you can see that's when we talk about our fund balance, that's where you can see the other things that I want to call attention to. Like set sites, 75, we had lots of conversations as a board about our board prioritizing the planning. And so we think about, we never use one source of funding. We use multiple sources of funding programs. So CTP and capital projects. So CTE and capital projects is another example of that rated funding. And then to give CTE funds from the state as well, so that's the three different sources treated. We work around our improvements in your tech house. We're going to talk a little bit about what they look like here. Any questions on that? Sarah has been doing a nice job of getting out through our social media with a new website. We're allowed to do Facebook and Instagram, where the old website is just the website. So we're able to try to push out new information in different ways. We did an audit on communications and how people liked to receive communications last year. Sarah tracks that daily, people said, our, what offers the best to push out communications? Apparently not really on Sunday morning. That's probably the lowest push out. So we did get a lot of traffic, track traffic on snow days because people are moving when weather is over. So Sarah's been doing some facts and pushing us out with community information, website. And one of the themes that she is using for the facts is a digital now. So for example, this will be another one coming out, working with the capital project levy. We're also looking at our total classroom setup right now. If I'm a classroom teacher, and I mentioned this the last time, if I go from classroom to classroom, I need either a different device or a different cord or a different book of. Many of our teachers' classrooms, we're typical reports to get to and from kids because you have hard work or. And so we're really trying to look at standardizing the classroom setup with the instructional. Round, so June's going to talk about that next, when we get a work study. So this is one of those digital knowbacks, when we start looking at capital levy, what is part of a capital level funding? So an average cost for a total setup now doesn't mean next year, but right now, it's $5,000 to do a teacher's classroom. And that includes the technology, the install, hookup, the projection, everything. So it's off the ground, the comp parts and really having an unbroken connection. So I go on a classroom practice, so go for that. All right. Another question that came up was where are we getting these ideas with capital project levy? So on the fire that went out, there's an item list of all projects. Some of those we talked about, so CTE and early learning center is our strategic priority. Along with looking at, working on our role language options, we talked about that as well. So the other thing I want to talk about is several years ago, as some board members and staff members have been part of the committee, which was an advisory committee. So every about 10, 15 years, you get a committee together that does an overall, so we can see that's what the district's future forecast looks like. Not only is student enrollment, enrollment, but educational programs, the infrastructure of the school system. And in fact, we talked about how early, a year ago, was more about the study and survey. Do we apply early, look at enrollment, that 1.47 North was going to do, and then. Still, I'm not really weighted a portion of the state with student enrollment, where we land on funding with that. So the study and survey on the left-hand side, that's from the district webber from the O S P I website. So we are eligible to participate in the study and survey. We know from 15 and even 10 and even five years ago, where we were with that capital project outlay, the laundry list of projects that needed to occur. And so we are coming toward that, we met with the architect room this fall, we looked at some of those projects that we've buttoned up. And then we come up with, there is a list of things that are our next fall report for the capital project levy. And then we were in, we were looking at determining how much do as an actual cost and how many people do first year, second year, third year. And again, really looking at our graded funding sources, so it's not coming out of blank buttons. I'm looking at my questions. So we have two remaining on this year's capital project, not the one we're going out on, with the current capital project levy. We have two remaining projects, we talked about it at the last meeting. But I just wanted to show you an example of what this looks like. And I. So this is a photograph of our food's room, our food's teacher and her classroom. That huge machine is part of the HVAC system. So we have teachers at the high school that have a lot of classroom space that's taken up with this very 1930s style system. And so that summer project will be the HVAC and then we partner with all of those classrooms that those big units will be coming out of. And those are on one side of the building mainly at the high school. So we're really trying to get all of those units out and upgraded and minimized, which means that we can have more classroom space. Especially when we're looking at Chris Hamel's classrooms, that big unit in there. Huge unit, that's more classroom space. This is the food room, for example. So we have these running on that side of the hallway, we're really condensing that HVAC system. So you can see how much space this takes just in that small type cooking center in the high school classroom. And this is a two bird, right? Because the other thing, as you can see, I think there's a plate, a hot plate on here. The other thing, that 75,000 that we looked at, some of those reserves. We had some safety committees come in and really look at the work through CTE as well as the electrical. So even if we were upgraded, we have to upgrade the whole electrical system in the high school to get it into the industrial. It's a lot of infrastructure stuff that needs to be done. So this is one example of the old project. The other one is the elementary school cover play area. So it's like, we're saving the best for last. Tom, the architect from Forte, construction cat sketches done three years ago. Today, today, knew this was going to be one of the last projects of the capital project. So we brushed those off, redid those a little bit, Mark and I got with him before the snow came. And this is really hard to see. So this is, if you were thinking about your parents, this is our front of the building for the elementary school. This is one corridor, it's our primary, this is our intermediate corridor, this is the courtyard. And then this is where that ball wall, is it just ball wall? It's a cement wall where kids stay home. And that's a beautiful bridge or a good home. So this covered play area will go in between, but not blocking access to the courtyard. And asking Mark, so to speak, the people that are part of that work, there was a lot of conversation about waiting to the cover play area. Thinking that there would be way more growth. And we're seeing some that have grown now at our elementary school, which is why we're talking about the early learning center. Because some of that growth becomes so tight that they were afraid of putting that cover play area at that end of the building. Because if you're moving, that end of the building, that adding more classroom spaces, that exact play structure, that's in the way. So we really looked at context, we looked at wind, we studied the wind. And then we really looked at what would the best placement be? We also have fire emergency lanes that we have to be aware of and drainage. And drainage is a big issue we know around the elementary fields we have ourselves. And so that too is part of that capital project. Slide is, this is really hard to see, I apologize. It's not an exciting structure at this point, but could be. So if we're looking at this structure, that's the architectural design of keeping a ball wall at one end and then open all the way around. We also have to think about snow load, ice runoff, and then visibility. So if you're out on that playground, can you have total visibility so where do you put ball wall? So while this is a sketch, it would be really working with some of our elementary staff, making sure that we're not missing anything. And the structure right now is 40 by 60 cover. We also looked at doing just beams at the edge and with the snow load and the size of that structure. We're really leaning at more industrial grade to make sure it's nice and biged up for that later. So that is the latest sketch, sorry. That was done. Okay. And so those are just some overview things that we've had a lot of questions about. And I appreciate people that are emailing us at community relations or me asking questions are great questions. And we're making sure we can try to get those out on Q and As that Sarah's sending out as well as our website.
Is there a process to change from the committee statement from 10 years ago? That we can only do it, create maybe every 10 years or from the state? Is that something we can do every year to reassess what we prioritized 10 years ago?
Yeah, that would be, that's a, yeah, it shouldn't be every 10 years. So it should be, it's part of our ongoing process.
Okay, so once, so we, when we pass this levy on the eighth and then we create a committee? And lay out our 10-year plan, it would be fine if I were to say, hey, we need to reevaluate where we're asked. There's not that rule. And is that something a parent can request or is that something from the board?
No, we can talk about it as well. So one of the, one of the things is really looking at, so you're graded funding and then you want to look at your projects take a couple of years to complete. So I would agree, like 10 years is way too long. So how do you keep that going, source from the center?
Right.
The study and survey, you know, that's a tricky thing. I know historically, and I didn't notice until like joining the school district was, historically, there is some reservation about going out too early with study and survey. And to be like, that's why we was more discussing a year ago, was a concern about going out too, going home with things. And that we don't see the cost of, we don't see the student enrollment come. And I know there was probably several of you that were involved in a bond that was voted years ago, the district had, had to stay in that household. And it never kicked. And so that's another reason is to think about being more often instead of waiting. We're really attached to the makeup moment. And as well as our permit leasing temple, we're really doing a job with city and reached out to people who doesn't have it. About that, what are the limits planned on the cost?
Please, it's obviously like if we repeat these last two years with rapid growth, and if we show to the state that our county. Decrease the population, that we can wire more funding for one of those brands?
They, they can grant you a little, which is why we qualified last year when I called the state, they're like, wow, we didn't know all that stuff for sure. You can go out early for your study and survey, but it's not something they're going to find every year. That's just internal districts. They don't need more station. They won't find that every year, O S P I won't.
Do you even want the cost of one of those?
Oh, gosh. I have, since a larger district, I was. Over here in the past. Or how much O S P I? I can, I can both dig that up, because then we'll know how much they're going to give us towards this.
Just an idea for a budget, how much contribution plan.
Yeah. And the reason the state is being more generous reaching out to school districts and not having to worry anymore. When I talk about this was, there was a study done about the fight conditions of school buildings across the, across Washington. And so O S P I has been excited to bump up the time of setting to get out to be able to get the size of tests. And this fall, it's a door to test. So we're still waiting on that as well. Good questions. Yes. Okay, so again, we are meeting again with our coaching team for the district and teachers. And that is Wednesday, so we're very excited to have Wednesday. We do have a Q and A as well as on the webpage. I can clearly mention it earlier, we try to keep our information follow along, the payments that are on the webpage. Our goal to be to wear our Google contacts on both sides. And I know all of us are.
Is that just the copy of what has always been up there for previous agreements or is there a link to turn one?
There is a Q and A one that breaks down some questions that we've been getting.
I saw that same link.
And it'll be hyperlinked to this night. This link is live right now, since it's kind of what we've been saying all along. But then we'll do a Q and A one upload to apps, so people can have it on their screen. And so the questions are really good, because if you haven't been, the negotiations for months, we all understand. So that'll be on the website, Sarah will make that live.
So Michelle, when does that go live?
Later, so tomorrow morning, yeah. Depends on capacity at this point. And then I just wanted to give a couple of thank yous again. Our firefighters did an amazing job. I know they worked really hard to try to save the building. At one point, they thought in the saving of it, they were going to have to demo it. So we just wanted to thank them for all their work. They got the snow and ice to get through there and it was, it was a tricky one. So I want to thank all of them for their work on that. And I also want to thank a couple of people, we do not have snow equipment to remove snow when it gets to a certain height. So and that is, you know, the thing about snow equipment, that's, you know, I can probably own houses and snow out. In the snowmains, we started getting big in the area of cars. Like we saw around town, we're getting trucks passing vehicles. So I want to thank GARD for coming in and really helping to get that snow moved. Just wanted to say much more pleasant. Yeah, it was, it started getting extremely tricky. So we're really appreciative of GARD and really thanks this time for putting this together. So thank you, GARD. Thank you, the suns came in and they came in with equipment that we had and they're like, we need way bigger equipment. Because it was a lot of snow. So I want to thank them and our favorite staff who just went to ship away a ice in this great. For us in San Jose that worked in, and San Hidya Lodge, they did a nice job, we used to watch students and jumping out to compensate. And their hospitality was amazing. Partner services to our students. And then staff and patient. So an update on that building is we are all in. We had came done, Sunday I came in and they were peeing and speckling. So that's all done with water and we're just waiting that truck, which is back order for like three months. So, because there's a supply of the, and we should put that to match the color. So it would be a while to put that in, go back and do another coat paint. But other than that, it's, we should be all ready to go and the carpets cleaned up nicely, so we got a couple of some carpeting. So we're really grateful. All right, I'm going to start with the moment for the average for January, actually for the year. But in January, it was 870.36 students. Now we want to our budget status reports. Actually, before that, I also want to note that we received a $2,000 donation this month from a gentleman, which I don't know who he is. But he sent a letter along with it that he just wanted it to go to general support of students where needed most. Something we need to improve for that donation. Our general fund with the staff's report, we have a fund balance of $3,436,940. Then we have restricted funds of $575,000. And then also restricted repeat service inventory, $5,805.44. So that leaves $2856,534.56. But we also need to refer back to the slide that I showed earlier for some of those other projects. Like the early learning center and CTE. And that leaves approximately $474,000 that's unreserved for us in the general plan. Capital projects, total end of fund balance is $3317,498.71. A S B fund balance is $169,762.96. Our debt service fund is $18,547.20. And our transportation fund, we have $138,003.73. And then our AP summary for the month, we have general fund is $172,449.49. We have a current payroll, I'll be running payroll tomorrow. So that will be coming, I'll have it in the next board report, it'll be in the neighborhood around $900,000. So that's financial service.
I will accept the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
On the paper?
Aye.
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 I've invited the presentation.
Very good?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any board comments?
I do. I don't know if you know, but I taught for almost forty years. So I know what it's worth and it is to teach. And I know that teachers are always underpaid, work a lot of hours. I mean, I never finished. I always took my work while I was a math teacher, I was always grading papers and writing stuff. And I understand that. What I didn't understand until I became a board member is how the state funds schools. And when I started doing some research and had to go to a board boot camp, I discovered that they have a certain model for small schools. And that's what we are, we're a small, small school. And they don't fund us. I mean, I thought that we have, how many teachers do we have, sixty eight teachers? If we have sixty eight teachers, the state gives us the money for sixty eight teachers. But they don't do that. The state gives us money for, I think it's forty six point eight teachers. And then at a certain, a certain amount, which is in the middle of the, the middle of the pay scale. And we have to figure out how to pay the high and the low with this. We have to add it all up and pay the high and the low. And then we have to figure out how to pay for our other teachers that the state doesn't give us money for. So it was a misunderstanding for me. I thought they would give us enough money to pay our staff, but they don't. And that's part of the reason why it's difficult for small schools to be able to give big raises and still be able to cover all the money. Because we have to find the money in our budget, separate from what's given to us from the state, to pay for the teachers above and beyond what they think we should have. And if that's what the state tells us. So we've been trying to play the money game and we're doing the best we can. And I just want you to understand that it's not a cut, cut and dry thing. It's not that we can just find the money and give it to you. We'd love to. I mean, I would love to give you a huge raise, knowing what it was like being a teacher for so many years. But we can't give you more money than we have, or we're not going to be fiscally viable down the road.
But there's money to hire more administrators than we've ever had in the history of the world.
Sounds like it's fine, it's in the past. I don't want to sound like you just got one of these. Just got.
I don't think we're over ten. State administrators over staff running through the students. Completely.
No, thanks for thinking of me, I'm good.
And we need a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn tonight's meeting.
On the paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.